Good morning and welcome to the October 15th meeting of the Ventura County Planning Commission. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Duquesne. Oh, she's on. On, she's muted. Let's see. Commissioner Duquesne? Topper. Commissioner Duquesne, we're doing roll call. Can you hear me? Thank you. Commissioner Duquesne? Can you hear me?
Commissioner Duquesne, can you hear us?
Commissioner Duquesne?
At the lower left-hand side, it's muted.
Thank you. Thank you, Earl. That's my fault. There we go. Commissioner Duquesne?
Good morning.
That was my error. I apologize. Thank you. Commissioner McPhail?
Present.
Commissioner King?
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, will you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you. The next item on the agenda, public comments. This is time set aside for comments by citizens on matters not appearing on the agenda. Do we have any public comments that have been submitted? Okay, no public comments. Can we please, will you please read the access email for people who do wish to submit comments on any of the cases that appear before us today?
If you wish to make any comment on any of our items, you need to email planning@... My God. If you would like to make a public comment on any of our items for today, please email Please indicate in the subject line which item you wish to speak on, and staff will read your comments to the planning commission. So any comments received after an agenda item will be made part of the record if it's been received prior to the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item five, approval of the minutes from our August 27th meeting. Do you have a motion for approval?
Chair White?
Yes.
I would like to move approval with just one correction in the sentence regarding my disclosure. There's a word missing.
Is that clear to everybody? Is there a second in the most for the motion?
Second.
Second.
Chair White?
Yes.
Excuse me. What's the word, Commissioner Duquesne, that you want added to the minutes?
It's just the... I don't have the minutes in front of me, and I've sent them to Megan twice, but they just, they didn't, they didn't go through. I think it's a Gmail thing or Google Docs thing. But anyway, I think it's the word "that." The sentence doesn't make sense grammatically, so it's not very important.
I see. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, let me put that in.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Just to make it English, just to make it English, that's all.
Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
All right. Chair White?
Yes.
Commissioner Duquesne?
Yes.
Commissioner McPhail?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Okay, the minutes are approved. Item six is case number PL 20-0070. Before we have the staff presentation, I would like to do the disclosures so that commissioners are able to question staff during their presentation. At this time, I would like to ask each planning commissioner to state on the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written ex parte communication regarding this agenda item that is not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Please disclose the substance of that information only if that information is not contained in the record before us on this matter. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Chair White?
I have no disclosures.
Commissioner Duquesne?
No disclosures.
Commissioner McPhail?
No disclosures.
Commissioner King?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
No disclosures.
Thank you.
So let's proceed with the staff presentation. I understand that Justin is the case planner. Take it away.
I'd like to say that I'm reading, or I'm going to say that I'm... I'm 697, we got it.
So, yes. So Chair White, I think it would be good to identify that we're doing item six and seven, and do your disclosures related to item seven as well, so that we can present the staff report.
And I'm sorry to interrupt. Just to speed things along, this is actually a legislative matter, and so technically you don't have to do disclosures. You can if you want, but there's no legal requirement.
Okay, please proceed.
Hey, Chair White, members of the commission. My name is Justin Bertline, I'm a planner with the RMA Planning Division. There are two items for your commission today, both of which owner-initiated zone changes to change the current zoning designation of open space to the proposed agricultural exclusive. These contract, or these applications are being processed concurrently with LCA contract applications, as our current LCA guidelines require that any agricultural crop production contract be cited on properties that are zoned agricultural exclusive. I'd like to remind anybody that is participating in this hearing that if they would like to comment on any of these agenda items, to send their comments to the email address listed here, and also to be sure to include the agenda item number in the subject line. The first case is case number PL 20-0070. This project site is located in Casitas Pass, on Casitas Pass Road, in the Carpinteria area of unincorporated Ventura County. The site is approximately 363 acres in size and consists of four legal lots, and contains only agricultural-related buildings. Getting a little feedback on this thing here. Can you lower the volume a little bit? The site has a general plan land use designation of open space and is zoned both, or open space 160 acres and open space 40 acres. The applicant is requesting to change the zoning of the properties from OS 160 to AE 160, and from OS 40 acres to AE 40 acres. And this is for, again, the purposes of obtaining an LCA contract on the property. The property suffered significant crop loss during the Thomas fire event, and recently the property owner planted approximately 18,000 avocado trees on the site. The site contains approximately 243 acres of irrigated crop, or irrigated avocado trees The next item is case number PL 20-0071. This site is located approximately three miles west on Casitas Pass Road, in the Carpinteria area of unincorporated Ventura County. The site has, the site is approximately 42 acres in size, consists of three legal lots, and only contains agricultural-related buildings. This property has a general plan land use designation of open space and is zoned OS 40 acres. The applicant is requesting to change that zoning from OS 40 to AE 40, again, for the purposes of obtaining a LCA contract on the property. So this site also suffered significant crop loss and damage during the Thomas fire. They recently replanted, and the site now contains approximately 26 acres of irrigated So as described in section B of the site reports, these projects both qualify for a sequoia categorical exemption under section 15061. This section allows for projects to be exempt from environmental review if it is, if it could be seen with certainty that the project will not have a negative impact on the environment. As described in section C of the staff report, both of these projects are consistent with all general plan policies and non-coastal zoning ordinance requirements. And described in section E is staff's recommended actions, and we ask that your commission take into consideration any testimony and evidence provided here today. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions that your commission may have.
Do any commissioners have questions? So, Justin. Commissioner McPhail?
Just one. On item number seven, out of the 40 acres, there's 28 planted right now?
That's 26.
26.
Yes, sir.
Is there a plan for the other, what, whatever, 14 to be planted?
Not the entire 14 acres, because there is some scrub areas that are just unplantable, but there are some areas that were damaged, the outlying areas, the upper reaches of the ridges. As they're phasing the replanting, those will be next, but not the entire 40 acres. They have buildings and areas that are just unplantable.
Yeah, I could tell from the terrain, you couldn't plant all of it.
Correct.
Just wanted to check.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from commissioners? Is there anyone interested?
Commissioner King has a question.
Okay, Jim. Excuse me. Commissioner King.
Thank you, Chair White. This is just a gee whiz question. I recall when we reviewed the, oh, the general plan and specifically the environmental impact report on the general plan, there was some controversy about potential changes to identified agricultural land. I don't remember what the phrases for it were. I don't know if it was important agricultural resources or what. But I'm just wondering, when we approve these zone changes to agricultural exclusive, if that increases the number of acres that are in that identified number of agricultural acres as an important resource?
Commissioner King, I believe, and Dave, board, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what you're referring to may be the important farmland inventory layer, which is a state designated soil classification. So the state can, state analyzes soil types, topography, and they label them as prime, statewide importance, local importance, depending on certain factors. This does not change any of that. Contracts are required to be placed on certain farmland inventory layer classifications. So that's where the ag preserve, the underlying ag preserves are derived from. So you can't have an ag preserve on built-up soil or soil that's not conducive to agriculture. But this does not change, have a impact on those designations.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner McPhail?
Is it appropriate to make a motion at this time?
Sure, that'd be fine.
I move the recommended staff recommendation for case number PL 20-007 and case number PL 20-0071. I move approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
It's just that it's 0070 and 0071.
That's what I said. Yes, it was.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the staff recommendation on the two cases. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sorry, Commissioner White, I didn't hear who seconded the motion.
It was Commissioner King, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, let me record that. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Duquesne? Can't you hear me? Aye, okay. Commissioner McPhail?
Aye.
Commissioner King? I'm not hearing people. They're muted now for some reason. Is it, did we change over? I'm not muted. Let me see what's going on. No, everyone's up. Commissioner King? Aye. Commissioner King says aye. We're having technical difficulties. Commissioner Rodriguez? Commissioner Rodriguez? Aye. All right. The passes, 5-0. I have no idea why we can't hear them.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously.
I do need to run through because item PL 20...
Do you want to take a few minutes to troubleshoot this?
Yeah, that would be great, and I...
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute pause to troubleshoot the audio here.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we're going to reconvene the meeting here for, because of our difficulty in hearing commissioners who are on Zoom, what we will do is, because Megan can hear them faintly, she will repeat comments or questions made by the three Zoom commissioners, so that everyone here, all the rest of us can hear that. So we will proceed with the next item on the agenda. Which is case number PL 190064, appellant Jeffrey P. Rebecca S. Smith. Before we have the staff presentation, I'd like to do the disclosures. At this time, I would like to ask each planning commissioner to state on the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written ex parte communication regarding the agenda item that is not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Please disclose the substance of that information only if that information is not contained in the record before us on this matter. The case planner is John Okendo. So, John, take it away.
You guys ready?
We're going to do disclosures?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's, please call the roll.
All right. Chair White?
No disclosures.
Thank you. Commissioner Duquesne?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Duquesne has no disclosures. Commissioner McPhail?
Just to state that, over the years, I've been guest at Solamar Beach at a couple of the houses.
All right, thank you. Commissioner King?
No disclosures.
Commissioner King has no disclosures. Commissioner Rodriguez?
No disclosures.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez has no disclosures.
Okay, please proceed, John.
Once again, my name is John Okendo. I am the case planner for the project item eight before you today. It's appeal case number PL 190064, the denial of zoning clearance case number 190268. So a quick reminder to members of the public participating in today's hearing, if you wish to comment on the project, you may email your comments to planning.pccomments@ventura.org. Be sure that message is 250 words or less, and be sure to indicate in the subject line that it is in reference to item, agenda item number eight. So the action under consideration today, the appellant requests that the planning commission grant an appeal and approve a zoning clearance for the authorization of repair and maintenance activities in support of a rock revetment located adjacent to an existing single-family dwelling. The appellants are Jeffrey and Rebecca Smith, represented today by David Armstrong, who will be presenting on behalf of the property owner. So they do have a presentation that's been prepared. So to orient the planning commission members of the public, the project is located in the Solamar Beach Colony, approximately five miles north of the city of Ventura. The site is addressed as 2960 Solamar Beach Drive. The general plan and land use zoning, and zoning designation for the property is as follows. So the property, the project does involve three properties. One is owned by the Homeowners Association. The one, one is the subject property where the home is located, and then there's an out parcel or a lettered lot parcel. With respect to the lettered lot parcel and the property with the dwelling, those properties are within the residential beach general plan land use designation. And the revetment is located in its own separate parcel within the open space general plan land use designation. The project is within the coastal area plan, and the residence is located within the residential high 6.1 to 36 dwelling units per acre coastal area plan land use designation. And the zoning for the subject property is RB-3,000 square feet residential beach with the minimum lot size of 3,000 square feet. So this side shows a little bit of a breakdown of the three properties in question. So the residence is highlighted with the address, 2960 Solamar Beach Drive. The project itself involves the placement of 135 tons of armor rock on approximately 40 linear feet in front of the subject lot. The sea wall is located on a 9.96 acre parcel owned in fee by the Solamar Homeowners Association, or, excuse me, the Solamar Colony Homeowners Association. And the lettered parcel is .05 acres. The lot is identified again as parcel I. It's located north of and adjacent to the residence, and is the proposed temporary staging area for the placement of the rock. So this is the condition of the property as a site visit was conducted on July 30th, 2019. The Smiths' lot, you can see the edge of their property, so where that, on the first project looking north towards Santa Barbara, you can see some of the volcanic rock that would be in front of their residence. The picture below that shows the beach access stairs, or the concrete stairs which extend down into the shore. And then the lettered parcel, or the out parcel, where they're proposing to stage temporarily for construction activities, is the picture on the right-hand side of the screen. So that property itself is vacant. There is no structures located on it. There is a mature tree. They did identify those in the documents that they submitted to the planning division in reference to the zoning clearance application and the appeal. And the project itself is covered by ground cover, so based on my site visit, it appears that it's ice plant. So as far as considerations for temporary construction impacts, you know, it's not a sensitive species. So in addition to the application for the zoning clearance, the appellant originally submitted these two documents. They're listed as, pardon me, exhibit five of the planning commission staff report. So on the left-hand side of the screen, you have a designed beach profile that was repurposed for the purposes of zoning clearance. So it shows the property, a section of the property with reference to the rock revetment, so it depicts the foundation and the layers of the revetment in reference to the subject property. And to the right is the maintenance and staging plan that was submitted to the planning division in consideration of the requested zoning clearance. So on that project plan, for those viewing at home and in the chambers, the residence is on the right-hand side of the screen, and the lettered parcel I, or the vacant parcel, is on the left. They're proposing to access via Solamar Beach Drive, have the material delivered, and placed on the rock revetment with mechanical equipment, 135 tons of rock material. So on March 18th, 2019, the appellant applied for zoning clearance 190268, citing coastal zoning ordinance section, or, excuse me, 8174-6.3.2 subsection A, which exempts certain repair and maintenance activities that do not involve enlargements or expansions from the requirement of a discretionary coastal plan development permit. Note that while section A does define repair, those repair and maintenance activities which are exempt from the coastal plan development permit requirement, there's a subsequent section in 8174-6.3.2 subsection B, which defines the exceptions to those exemptions. So we want to make sure that we're clear about the terms. The exceptions are defined in subsection B, where a coastal plan development would be required for certain types of repair and maintenance activities. So coastal section, or, excuse me, coastal zoning ordinance section 8174-6.3.2 subsection B lists several repair and maintenance activities that are not exempt and would require a coastal plan development permit. The proposed, or the proposal for you today includes repairs which would occur within that, that area defined in Roman numeral I, or, excuse me, item, subsection three, so a sandy area within 20 feet of coastal waters. As such, we determine that a coastal plan development would be required for the proposed repair and maintenance activities. So exhibit four of the planning commission staff report is the planning director's denial letter. The... The, the denial determined very clearly that the proposed repair did not qualify for a categorical exclusion from the requirement for the coastal plan development permit, again, per subsection 8174-6.3.2b, item three, Roman numeral one. So, with respect to the appeal, this matter comes before you, before the planning commission as an appeal of the planning director's denial of zoning clearance 19-268. The planning commission will be reviewing the project de novo or anew. In, in summary, the appellant is asserting that the project meets the requirements of, as a, an excluded, excuse me, a categorically excluded project under that subsection A and should be permitted with a zoning clearance. So, that this is some of their summary of some of their appeal grounds. More specifically, they're asserting that repair and replacing rock that has been dislodged and lost, or primarily that they're repairing and replacing rock that has been dislodged or lost. No work would occur within 10 feet of the mean high tide line, and the project will not have an impact on coastal resources. So, that's the, the first three items or the first three grounds of appeal identified in the staff report. Further, these, these two items are basically related, but they're contending that the repairs will not exceed the original size and scale of the previously approved rock So, the division is not refuting the, the, the loss of material in this case. However, the California Code of Regulations, in concert with the county's own certified local coastal program, specifically states that this type of repair is subject to, to a discretionary coastal plan development permit and is not subject to that administrative permit or the, the ministerial zoning clearance. With respect to SEQA, staff determined our recommended action is exempt under SEQA guideline section 15270, the projects which are disapproved. So, again, just to hit on, on the, the determination and justification for the denial, we are identifying it as within a sand area and within 20 feet of coastal waters in consideration of the, the local coastal program. So, our recommended action today is that the, the planning commission deny the appeal and affirm the, or therefore affirming the planning director's denial of the zoning clearance requested. So, our actions would be as follows, that the planning commission certified that it has reviewed and considered the staff report and all exhibits attached thereto and all evidence and testimony received during the hearing, that the planning commission find that the project is statutorily exempt from SEQA under section 15270 of the Public Resources Code, that the planning commission deny the appeal and uphold the director's decision to deny zoning clearance ZZ-190268, and decline to refund any appeal fees associated with the appeal filing, and specify the, that the, the clerk of the planning commission is the custodian of records and the location of the materials that constitute the record of proceedings the decision is based on. We want to remind the public once again that the, they may submit comments via email. So, you, you can email those to theplanning.pccomments@ventura.org. Those will be read into the records. Make sure that the message is 250 words or less and that you include in the subject item that, that it's in reference to agenda item number eight. Note before conclusion, I, there, one item that we did not include or correction item was, we identified in the staff report, an acronym that did not include a definition. So, there was, in, with respect to one of the appeal grounds, the identification of elevation in reference to NAVD or NAVD. That's in reference to the North American Vertical Datum. So, that's how elevation is, is measured in terms of elevation at a site. So, the height of the retaining wall was asserted to be, I believe it was 15 feet NAVD, meaning above the North American Vertical Datum, so 15 feet. Thank you, planning commissioners, for your time. I'm available for any immediate questions, and I just remind you that the appellant does have a presentation to give, and we do, we did receive some additional materials that we can certainly discuss and provide response in reference to.
Okay, thank you, John. So, it's time for planning commissioner questions. I, I do have a question. So, my understanding is that the coastal plan, the coastal zoning ordinance require for this kind of repair, a coastal plan development permit. That's correct?
Yes.
And assuming that the applicant or appellant in this case availed himself of applying for that permit, is the expectation that, that county staff would, would approve this kind of repair for the, have the right permit?
It's difficult to state because it is a discretionary action, meaning we do, you know, exercise some judgment with respect to the repair activities. Looking forward to the, the findings associated with the coastal PD permit, it's, it's possible, but we have to really make sure that, that our bases are covered in terms of the review of the full scope of the project. So, making sure that other agencies are assisting the planning division in our review, primarily the watershed protection district, that they're reviewing any engineering-related documents and asserting assumptions or conclusions and recommendations made from the applicant's engineer. I think that's the primary reason why I would qualify that determination, but conceivably, a repair project like this could be approved through the coastal plan development permit process.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner McPhail?
Yeah, I would, I'm, I'm a little bit confused when I read the staff report because I can't remember the numbers, but subsection A says it's okay, subsection B says it's contradicts A. Can you explain to me the contradictions again?
Sure. So, there's, the question was in reference to the, the identification of general exemptions and exclusions under coastal zoning ordinance section 8174-6.3.2, and specifically the difference between subsection A and subsection B. So, I would say broadly, subsection A just says, projects which do not result in enlargements or expansions of existing structures that, that would qualify as a repair maintenance activities, excuse me, that they would be exempt from the requirement of a coastal plan development permit. And then the, that section itself, so subsection A cites subsection B and says, with the exception of those activities identified in subsection B. So, there's subsequent projects that are, repair projects in the repair vein that are identified in that subsection B. So, what we're asserting is that with respect to subsection B, that the project is within the, the third category of projects, which is repair and maintenance to facilities or structures or work located within an ESHA, any sand area within 50 feet of the edge of a coastal bluff or ESHA, or within 20 feet of coastal waters or, or streams, which include, and then it lists the types of activities which would fall under that category. And it does state the, the placement of, of rock, solid material or riprap.
I, I, I think I understand what you've just said, but I kind of have a, a problem. I think subsection A and B need to be better clarified because when you read A, and what they want to do is repair, I can't understand why they don't qualify under A because they're just repairing and doing maintenance. Now, if, if the appeal is not granted and they have to have the other permit, that means everybody along that shoreline will have to go through the same process because that rock has been there for God knows how many years. And if they're just doing maintenance and repair, they're not doing anything with the sand. And sometimes the sand's not even there, if you know the coastal, especially sometimes in the winter, there is no sand. So, I did, I'm just having a problem understanding why it's not just maintenance and repair under subsection A because they are not going to do anything with the sand. And, you know, it just, I don't know, I'm just having a problem justifying in my own mind why the appeal was denied, but perhaps after the applicant's presentation and stuff and further review, maybe I'll understand it a little bit better. Thank you.
Chair, Chair White, Commissioner McPhail. One of the purposes of the coastal development permit when you're in, and adjacent to sensitive habitat areas, is the methodology of construction, the staging, the necessary area of work that might be involved to construct, or in this case, repair portions of the revetment. And so, I often process coastal permits in the various jurisdictions I've worked where the methodology of actually your construction and how that might address and impact potentially how you do the work needs to be assessed and is part of what a coastal development permit would address for the construction phase.
So, that was an, I, I guess my next question is that the original plan submitted didn't go far enough to explain that.
Well, I-
As far as the engineering and the staging and, and everything.
The context by which the planning staff in review through a coastal development application would look at the construction methodologies in relationship to how one would stage, and that could have an impact to coastal resources, and that's part of what the staff analysis would address in working with the applicant, might lead to an operational plant, construction plan that they would file, and it might deem that that's appropriate. But the coastal permit, that discretionary review is really what is another opportunity of what the coastal permit provides.
Okay, thank you.
Mr., Commissioner McPhail, if I could just add one more item to this discussion. My name is Jennifer Welch. I'm John's manager. So, this revetment was approved in 1981 by the Coastal Commission, and the Coastal Commission approved it because the county didn't have a certified local coastal program. And so, when you look at the Coastal Commission's permit, the first thing that they had to do was make sure that it was consistent with the Coastal Act. And so, when you look at subsection A, subsection A says, you've checked off all of these boxes, and there's no potential for significant impact. You're consistent with the Coastal Act. The one section that they've identified in the staff report for that 1981 revetment is Coastal Act section 30253, and it says, new development shall assure stability and structural integrity and neither create nor contribute significantly to erosion, geologic instability, or destruction of the site or surrounding areas. To get, find consistency with that policy, they conditioned that permit to say, we want to see engineering plans, the design of that rock revetment, and we want not only our executive director to look at them, but we want our coastal engineer to review them as well. This zoning clearance did not include engineering plans. It included a site plan and an elevation or a profile. And on that site plan, it has reference to a survey conducted in 2017 of the mean high tide line. What's interesting about the 1981 coastal development permit that the Coastal Commission issued is they said, make sure state lands is good with this. So, as the planning division, we have a responsibility to at least meet that minimum objective of the original permit, engineering plans and verification of the mean high tide. And we weren't provided that information.
Okay, thank you. I think you answered my question.
Great.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Any other, Commissioner King, I see you, go ahead.
My first question-
Really deals with the definition. Really deals with the definition.
Speak louder.
Commissioner King?
No, you speak louder.
I know, I'm going to tell him what I'm doing. Thank you. Commissioner King, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you just fine.
Fantastic. I, okay, so I'm going to be your translator. So, we might have to go a little slow. So, let me tell you where I stopped off. The definition you have is with-
Before I go on, let me ask this question again.
Okay.
Can everyone else hear?
No, only I can.
I can hear you. Okay. Can I ask you something? Commissioner McPhail, can you hear me?
Can you hear, Commissioner McPhail, can you hear Commissioner King?
No. A little bit.
A, a little bit.
Like, like turning on, you're going to get a little-
Do you want me to go over there and listen, and then I'll relay his comment?
I'll do the best I can, Commissioner King. I apologize for the circumstances.
I'll just, it's really difficult for me to try and ask questions and get an answer, but one more.
But, Commissioner King, I do have Jennifer Welch right next to me, and she can hear you, so it's just the people in the boardroom cannot hear your question, but we'll, we'll do the best we can.
I'll reiterate your question after you tell me.
Go ahead.
Fundamentally, I'm giving down to this. Was for calculating.
No, go ahead. You don't need to pause. Just ask your question.
Okay. How precisely is the definition of a PDR definition, how precisely that the planning code-
ESHA is defined by the Coastal Act and our local coastal program. So, it is specifically defined. Now, the Coastal Commission has said the sandy beach is not considered ESHA, but that's not to say that a bluff that's vegetated doesn't constitute ESHA. But ESHA is defined in both the local coastal program and the Coastal Act. You can speak up here.
What we're talking about here is the, the, the sand report, from hand to hand on the back, and if this work is done on the sandy area, is that correct?
You can speak here, Jennifer. The revetment is on a sand area. The rock is going on the revetment, which is on a sand area. The coastal, the, the work is going to be within 20 feet of coastal waters. The Pacific Ocean is a coastal water. This site experiences two high tides, so it is within 20 feet of coastal waters.
Okay, once again, how do you know that if the revetment is on sand, you don't, because you don't, and the coastal commission can produce it on, if it comes to-
That's incorrect, Commissioner, that's incorrect, Mr. Commissioner King. I have the staff report right here from the Coastal Commission. It includes the, the, the profile of the plans that they reviewed, and it includes their staff report and the conditions to the permit in 1981. And in that permit, that's what I was trying to explain, when the Coastal Commission approved this revetment in 1981, they had to find consistency with the Coastal Act, and that new development would not impact coastal resources and adjoining properties. To accomplish that, they conditioned the permit to provide engineering plans to be reviewed by the executive director of the Coastal Commission and their coastal engineer, and to verify that the mean high tide line was indeed in the location that they had called out and that the coastal, the state lands commission did not have any issue. Those were conditions to that 1981 permit. For us to issue a zoning clearance, we have to check off all the boxes. For us to issue a zoning clearance, we have to check off all the boxes. We have to say that what they're proposing is indeed consistent with the Coastal Act. The statute is very clear. There are instances where repair and maintenance fall under a zoning clearance. But there are exceptions to that. And when we look at the statute, that's when it says, "If you are on a sand area within 20 feet of coastal waters, you don't get the benefit of a zoning clearance." And that's what we denied the zoning clearance on. Yes, emphatically. That's correct. They, if they did, it was under an emergency permit or a coastal plan development permit. And even in the instance of an emergency permit, the code is very clear. You have to come back for a coastal development permit to permit the work that you did under the emergency.
Okay, do any other commissioners have questions? Commissioner Duca, you're recognized.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. One of the things that we got later was for stand-up engineering projects. What difference does that make in regard to granting this appeal?
We were provided those plans on October 12. This zoning clearance application was submitted a year ago.
Understood. That isn't, it's not good, but it's understandable if people are unfamiliar with the permitting process. You know, there's certain conditions that happen. And I think it's a mistake that can be forgiven. But say, if you had time to review that, would that make a difference in statute recognition?
No, because the statute says that if the work is on, you know, on the sand or within 20 feet of coastal waters, you don't get the benefit of a zoning clearance. And if I can, I understand it, but if I could just say one thing. If we were to allow this under a zoning clearance hypothetically, there isn't another exception. And that exception says, "You can have a threshold of 20% new material." If we were to allow this under a zoning clearance with what we've been provided, a profile and a site plan, I'm pretty sure every resident in the Solomar Colony would come to us for a zoning clearance, because we've opened up that gate. And how is planning going to make sure that that revetment, as it cumulatively gets added onto, is structurally sound and that it's meeting that 20% threshold? We don't even have to go there. They've already hit two that makes them into the discretionary permit.
Are there any other commissioners? Commissioner Rodriguez, you're recognized.
I'm sure that I did, the charge is moving up. Did any impact the sand? So I'm really prepared. And I think it's, we're gonna talk a lot about the rock, right?
Yes.
So how does it impact the sand? And is already impacted by the rock? Basically, basically, the foundation, the nature of the rock?
There is the potential for the rock to be dislodged and fall into the coastal wash, the tidal wash. Without engineering plans, planning has no confidence that this rock will be installed properly. And Coastal Act, I mean, the Coastal Commission in 81 had the same concerns. Without the confidence of engineering plans to make that finding that new development would not impact coastal resources or adjoining properties. And with sea level rise imminent, we don't only consider the two high tides, but the storm surges that these coastal properties are experiencing on a regular basis. Actually, the coastal plan development permit would be a planning director decision. And it's crystal clear, the code says that if you hit these exceptions, it's a coastal plan development permit. We're just upholding the code and the Coastal Act and the California Code of Regulations. That project was actually heard by the California Coastal Commission in 2008, so they took the lead on the permit for that. So they would have exhaustively gone through the Coastal Act to make sure it was consistent. Yeah, it could have come under the emergency permit situation, which says, "Hey, if you're in an emergency situation, we don't have time to do the proper permit path. Just notify the proper authorities, the local agency and the Coastal Commission, of the imminent emergency. And then we are authorized to say, move ahead with that repair, but that within 90 days, you have to come in with a coastal plan development permit to permit all of that emergency work." Yes. If planning was the lead, yes. Yes. That's correct, and typically that's what you want to do. You don't want to have equipment on the beach, because there's no access to get that equipment off the beach. That'd be something that the engineer would have to figure out as part of their scope.
Chair White.
Yes, Director Ward.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Rodriguez, could you repeat yourself? We had a little background noise here.
Chair, yeah. Yeah, Chair White, Commissioner Rodriguez.
Commissioner Rodriguez, will you hold, please? Director Ward has something to say here, go ahead, Director Ward.
Thank you, Chair White. When I was describing with Commissioner McVeil, the purposes of construction methodology as being part of a coastal development permit, I have actually processed permits that involved staging work. Just as Commissioner Duca's just mentioned, crane activity and things. There have been permits issued that allow for activity on the beach, but it does involve biological review. There are aspects that are being permitted to allow for that. So yes, you can get in and stage and do work, but that would be in the context of that coastal development permit that is trying to limit and reduce impacts to resources.
Thank you, Director Ward. Commissioner Rodriguez, did you have further comments you'd like to make?
That's correct.
Any other questions from commissioners? I would like to make a comment. It seems clear to me that the applicant appellant can probably do the repairs that he wants to do, they want to do. But it's clear that they need to acquire a coastal plan development permit to do that. That's what the county regulations say. I think it's incumbent on the Planning Commission to uphold what regulations the county has. This is a recommendation of our staff. And I think while we want to hear from the appellant on this, that's where we ought to be headed. I guess the next item would be to have the-
I think you may have one more comment from Commissioner Rodriguez.
Okay, Commissioner Rodriguez, see your hand there, you have the floor.
And, I'm sorry, just to touch on the point that Commissioner Duca's made regarding the submittal of the documentation and the sufficiency, I just wanted to reiterate that the timing, we did discuss with the appellant. I don't want to put them on the, you know, the spotlight and tell them that, you know, we told them the minimum time that we needed to receive additional documentation, and they provided that to us. They have their own story too, and I'm gonna let them explain. But I just don't want to have the appellant, you know, upset or wanting to address that specifically. That there was some engineering documentation prepared when they submitted the zoning clearance. There was some discussions with staff that I, as the case planner for the appeal, did not have direct discussion with them at that time. I received the application after the denial was made. So there was some discussion about what could be submitted at the time and the sufficiency of that. So that's just to hit on that point again. They're gonna have their story about when the documentation was repaired and how it was repaired, and what they're showing you in those reports. So I just want to just touch on that. I don't want to leave it out there and just, you know, not give you that additional story.
Do they need help bringing up his thing?
Okay, thank you. Let's have the appellant's presentation, please.
Hey Dave, are you there?
Okay, so we have Jeff Smith and David Armstrong.
Hey Dave.
Yes, Dave, we can hear you. David, you need to share your screen.
We do not see your PowerPoint yet.
So David, I have it on my Surface Pro, so I'm gonna share my screen with your PowerPoint. You just tell me when to go to the next slide, okay?
Okay. So then, shall I go to this house?
Hold on just a sec. We are. There we go. All right, David, you have the floor, just tell me when the next slide.
...
And therefore, we need to figure this out. So we were working, we submitted a decision and a half of the state coastal survey and elements of the system that we're going to go at south. So we had all the time to do the research, but we're pulling apart. So I took the scene. This does not involve any alterations, modifications, actions, or any other report. It's a further file that's out before. Can we activate the code for the work and thus for what we do? We can't change words in the code in the presentation. You have to be able to actual approve and opt. So our proposal is only to replace missing portions of what's called the cap. So by the time you can see from this, so we cannot... I did all the work, right, in the rest of the commission office. And I have to try, they really all gave the material not available. I asked that they have to be required that was never provided to us on the department. So what it was able to find is this is all closed in the eighteen six weeks. Permitted at March thirteenth, nineteen eighty-one. Work didn't really happen to complicate this section. It was empty and the same exact engineer, he uses twenty-eight six. That thing was consistent. Designed by the same engineer, based on his own experience. It's the, this is not a concept. You can see where the stand line is. This shows where the rock is. I'm getting a little slow, but actually, I'm... We have to go back to the checks. So this is paving the coastal survey. The full term engine here up in the area is a long, decent rock. It's active, but those are backwards and just a small point. We have a timeline that's also been outlined for the property survey. Also obligated, this is obligated with the A C N area. I've been focusing on that because the rules were very specific. Competitively, we had to coastal operation, obligated within twenty-eight coastal waters. Four streams, so it's a three-point exit. So here's the first standard basis file. We're sure of these, we're going to be under, pursuant to the C Z O code section, projects are non-exempt. If it involves substantial alteration of the foundation, of the repetitive work. So the area is not a substantial alteration, but of the foundation. Not just work on that, but on the foundation, it has to be substantial, right? So here are the codes. So this is an interesting account, sure, because why not? Code says, for someone to section thirty-eighty-five-two, all of my coastal regulations, all the prepared activities are non-exempt. Because they involve the best of substantial, adverse, prior, next. So I know that the help we can bring is the view to one-two is different. Except for the only, all we need is reported, that is, of maintenance, shop requires. So now the other call for it, it has to be extraordinary. And so what is extraordinary? And then what they do is define the extraordinary and the risk of substantial adverse prior. So extraordinary happens, absolutely, it's a little bit difficult. The interpretation is better, next. So here's, here's just a go. So you can see, I think this is very helpful, to see how the years, the generations, the Russians, the French, earlier up, how this is set up. And here it says substantial alteration of the foundation, which is not how, next. And the product, the hot, the two products, the two seeds, the two rocks, the absolute powder. The additional amount of touch, the amount of rock to be placed in this body can also be less than two heads of one percent of the product. Less than two heads of one percent, next. So it's like the same basis, your hot, the level that it was depending on, there's a term. Most of the project did not follow a regular solution. It was suspended, focused repair activities, on the place of solid materials, not products, solid, solid material. On each structure, with a dead, A C N area. Now, the competition before was set on the sand area, it has to be over the dead. The code is suspended, it's a little lean, A C N area. And within, for the coastal area, coastal is inside, it has to be within, as far as the inside, the sand area. I mean, so it's fine, so, thanks. So all the...
Dave, this is Megan in the boardroom. Can you hear me? David? David, can you hear me in the boardroom? I have no idea why. David? Oh, I'm muted. Hold on. David? All right, Earl, let me check yours. Earl, are you muted by chance?
I'm muted, but we lost the connection.
Oh, okay. Dave, you're connecting. Can't hear me? So...
Mr. Armstrong, this is Chair White. Can you acknowledge that you hear me with a thumbs up? Okay, well, will you speak some words so we can see if we hear you? Yes. Please proceed. You need to go back about a minute or two to make sure we catch all of your testimony. Thank you.
So this again is after making the six section, in, next. This is where the rocks are supposed to be placed across section, next. This is another single. You can see that a small design, there's a modifier, it's a whole new pad, which is a mountain. It's a mountain. The answer on layer, a little bit heavier rocks, that's up there, the most, it's a top. So this is all, this is a top, it's a long segment. The A C N areas, those are, so they're custom inside, so, next. So I don't, I'm asking, we're digging a, this is what a sand area, A C N area, that's what a sand area is. And all she believes about, they're all sound, they're all made on, so this is, there's only parents. So any parents, you're logging on to the location, you can see, next. So on the description for this, I was, you prepare, you, on the A C S, you're being assisted, how you operate, stairway repair, all in the pocket. areas, or if there is any existing concrete operating stairway repair on the property. For this to be issued, we must consider our priority to contact the section and see if there is a right next to it. So, this zoning clearance, so my mindset is that we're in a hurry to provide an action on the property. So, we must offer something probably with issue on the line of wanting all this deal suspended, suspended. You place concrete stairway at this, means we need steel or maintenance, which is solid materials, uh, standard up, same season, CZO section cited, who would have done the studies, I don't know, next to it. Here's a picture of the stairs being completed, uh, this was determined by your staff, uh, people in the sand area, which is a crack in the foundation, and on, uh, they're going to be able to support, so to possibly be made, right, in addition, issue. Here's a, uh, you have a, an opposite, uh, a, uh, engineering board, this is a survey, uh, same sheet of survey, uh, so, uh, 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 here, uh, on this next. Here's one of the sand, sand, you can see, yeah, so, uh, we're, 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 we're in the sand area, and possibly, uh, so, that's the, the, uh, the, uh, show, show, uh, sound, uh, so, saying those actually, the county, the county is what we're trying to figure out, is not what if the sand area, uh, would be, would be, uh, so, say, those actually say, uh, the law is, is, like, concrete is, that's, you're asking, uh, to, uh, to create a German, basically, that is solid material, uh, being, speaking of steel, this case, or construction, you, forms, uh, we're, uh, uh, the, 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 the area, next to it. We have got the one, uh, this one, uh, uh, ground, uh, uh, this is a, this is involved with substantial adverse, so, uh, so, staff has said, this, 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 this is a substantial adverse, uh, 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 this, uh, this, uh, this, uh, this, uh, this is, uh, 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 so, uh, we, 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 uh, we, uh, we, uh, we, uh, we, uh, we, uh, here's the basis of this, basically, some, uh, we had a sand area, uh, more, uh, substantial, uh, 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 so, something there is, uh, probably, uh, seven, clearly, place concrete, uh, on the same floor, uh, approved, this fairly approved, uh, so, next to it. So, as we're looking at the scale, what might else you can do, uh, is that really on, uh, because, uh, well, that's, you know, uh, concrete, exactly, be a school of operations, uh, 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 we, uh, we, uh, five, by eighteen hundred foot, uh, on the property, uh, all the, uh, uh, society, uh, well, uh, uh, six hundred five, uh, 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 here's another, uh, 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 uh,[491.12]
And projects should be decided based on its own merits, but you're correct in that it's likely that there will be other requests to make similar repairs on this revetment. And so as we've seen in the presentation of the appellant, who is citing past projects, I can almost guarantee that if your commission says that a zoning clearance is good enough, that will be cited by other applicants and appellants in this similar, for similar type projects in the area.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Adukas, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear it. Through the planning director's conference, this morning, I was surprised that was under the problem that you got the recommendations of the exception first. It now pertains to.
Uh huh. Just give me a minute.
Okay. Also, we're making a discussion that this water district, you know, is something that we get high on. This is a precaution. Is it not?
I'm sorry, the water district?
This line that was. So is there a conflict between what the state resources code says in our standards?
Commissioner Adukas, so when we prepared our local coastal program, which the coastal's ordinance is a part, it has to be certified by the coastal commission, and it has to be consistent and as effective as the coastal act. The California Code of Regulations is referencing the coastal act, as is the coastal act referencing the code of regulations. So when we pull that excerpt from the California Code of Regulations into our code, the intent is maintained, and we interpret it based on our geographical area as certified in our local coastal program. So it's citing that California code in our exclusions. That's definitely in our code. Okay, Commissioner Adukas has asked that we go back one more slide. Sure.
So I see perhaps a little bit here for these two slides that it doesn't, there's no zoning clearance that could be allowed because of these exceptions.
That's correct. And Mr. Armstrong cited the B three I, which references the foundation. Staff references B three double triple I, which is the one that talks about within coastal waters, within 20 feet of coastal waters. So we didn't even reference the foundation as it not being approved by a zoning clearance. We have to remember, section B in our coastal zoning ordinance lists all the exceptions to a zoning clearance. They don't have to meet all of them. If they meet certain criteria, then they don't get the benefit of a zoning clearance. Staff identified two. The foundation was not one of those two. Uh huh.
Commissioner McPhail has a question here.
Yeah, can you pull up the slide for the discretionary permit you approved for the stairs?
Yes.
No, the picture, not the, the.
Oh, the picture of the, all the stairs.
Yeah. No, the, the one that you approved, that he had a picture of the stairs that had already been approved.
It's in Dave's.
Mr. Armstrong's.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Slide 18.
Okay.
And 19. I think Mr. Ward said number 19.
18 and 19.
18, 19.
Am I getting close? I don't have numbers on these.
There we go. Okay. In my mind, I see a contradiction between this permit being granted and the Smiths' permit not being granted, because that lower step is beyond the footprint and is out in the sand. And you're saying, you're telling me, or telling the commission, that that was just maintenance over what was already there. What the Smiths are proposing is maintenance for what's already there. I, I see a contradiction in the decision-making process to deny their, their permit. I just, I'm, I'm a little confused here on why that is okay, and what they want to do is replace some rocks that don't even go close to the sand is not okay as maintenance and repair under subsection A. To me, this is a direct conflict in decision-making, because that lower step, whether it was concreted back over or whatever, is out in the sand, and the Smiths aren't talking about being any rock out in the sand. And in my mind, what they're doing is still repair and maintenance of rock that is no longer there because it washed away. And I'm just, I'm just a little bit concerned that there's a double standard somewhere in here, and I have a problem with that. Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner McPhail, may I answer your comment? So as I mentioned, the repair work was to do a surface layer to repair the cracks and any divots in an area that was already a defined footprint. It's not going to expand or enlarge the seawall and its, or the revetment, and there's not going to be any potential for new rock to, or this stairs to deflect any resources onto adjoining properties. You're correct, it is on the sand. You're correct, it is within 20 feet of coastal waters. But our local coastal program allows the lead agency, the planning division, the county, to interpret what constitutes repair and maintenance and what constitutes a coastal PD. In this particular instance, the planning division determined this constitutes repair and maintenance. You're right, it does hit those two points, but it won't have a potentially significant impact based on the scope of work. It's within a confined 186 square feet, and they're simply resurfacing what's already there. This is adding new rock.
I, I understand what you're saying, and I apologize for interrupting, but I, I still don't get your thought process here, because the other, the Smiths' project is still maintenance and repair. It doesn't matter if it's 40 feet wide, or if it's 20 feet wide, or 10 feet wide, whatever those steps are. It's still the same process. And I think there's a conflict that somebody's got to resolve here, because we're not talking about two different things. In my mind, we're talking about the exact same thing. Two different determinations have been made.
So.
And I think that's the conflict. I understand what you're trying to tell me, and I appreciate that, but what I'm telling you is, I don't agree with it, I guess. Okay?
And Chair White, Commissioner McPhail, and Planning Manager Welch, I appreciate the discussion and dialogue and providing perspectives of staff's analysis. And this appeal is part of that. This is your ability as a commission to weigh in collectively and provide some direction if you feel staff's interpretation is not correct. And so that's what we'll be looking for ultimately in the direction you give us and provide that framework. I do think what both staff and Mr. Armstrong has done is pointed out those provisions in that code. And those code subsections do all work collectively together, and it will be important at the conclusion of today, depending on the direction their commission might go, is framing the direction within those provisions. And that may serve as guidance to staff and me as the director going forward.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. Ward, because I do have a recommendation when we're done with the motion or whatever, but I do have a recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner McPhail. Do any other commissioners have questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, I believe the Smiths, Mr. Smith, wanted to present some information. You have the floor, Mr. Smith.
This, I think, is really a big, serious water. I want to just emphasize that the fact that I are residents, this is not our home. We were talking about maintaining our home, I'm sure all of you, because I see many of you here in your own houses this year. And part of that, of action, and the thing is to see that that's what we're trying to address, not only our property, actually our homes. And as a result, we may have many serious challenges to provide with the repair and maintenance code. And if you look through these three steps, you will see that we have applied each of the steps, and we aren't going to be hiding from the sand area, we're willing to essentially involve all of us. And so I would urge you guys, that as the planning representatives, they want to see exactly how we have backed to apply each of the subsections of the repair and maintenance code. We should very much appreciate your consideration. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I see Mr. Armstrong with a finger raised up. Mr. Armstrong, you have the floor.
So I mean, I'm sure my, I mean, so I just want to, I'm, I'm also a position, and there is this notion that, that this is a ministerial, this is a discretionary, discretionary project. And that now staff is saying that these are all subjects of interpretation. So how is that a ministerial decision if it's subject to their interpretation and we talk about precedents? So you're not saying that all ministerial acts are based on the actual divots, all as written, not as written?
I do want, so I mean, to me, that is a, that is the precedent that I would be more concerned about as a resident of this county and how we decide that. You're talking about deflecting ways into neighboring properties.
I should give you an example of what's going on at Soul Beach, a giant, you know, the seawall, the impound, those, maybe it has, maybe says, all that information to say that you create a situation like that. And that's, a part of discretion is being able to evaluate and condition those impacts to make them less than significant. But there are those impacts that, that, but I don't actually hold the pressure to project that have those impacts, that are conditions. So there are those conditions that can be placed on this, whether the projects are affected by it, then by, by the lies, supposedly impacts to less than, it's, so we believe this, the ministerial act, the building creates, certainly say that, for record, that it is their provision, whereas you may surprise these into the location on the standard, on the 20%, the materials, on the expansion, on the others, and so I'd ask you, so I really appreciate your suggestions.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Adukas?
Could I have to sit down and look at the, well, later, in June 14, 2019, page 23, that's like, so the reasons why the, the project was in life, initially section 8174-6.32B3I is what is cited according to that session that, for all of the, now, are you sure that the same thing, and I have a little that, because the standard for it, rather, it has been, uh, sweeping up the waters, it is, is, is it high, is it too high, high on?
Commissioner Adukas, yes, section 8174-6.32B3I. So when we read that collectively, it says pursuant to section 13252 of title 14 of the California Code of Regulations, the following repair and maintenance activities are not exempt and shall require a coastal development permit because they involve a risk of substantial adverse environmental impact. Any repair or maintenance to facilities or structures or work located in an escha, any sand area within 50 feet of the edge of a coastal bluff or escha, or within 20 feet of coastal waters or streams, that include the placement or removal, whether temporary or permanent, of riprap rocks, sand, or other material, beach materials, or any other forms of solid materials.
I, 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 we would have to analyze to determine if there is any potential environmental impact.
And I'd like to emphasize that the projects that Mr. Armstrong is referring to, the two Caltrans projects, went under a coastal development permit, a discretionary process, and they did evaluate it, and excluded that those projects did not have an environmental impact. They were the lead agency.
So it's, so it's possible to, to extrapolate that if they use the proper process, if it's the land development permit, that there would be a, a similar finding that, could you look at?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Adukas. Any other commissioners have comments? Commissioner Rodriguez, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'll, 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 I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Chair White, Commissioner Rodriguez, yes. Yes, it still is a coastal development permit and does require that analysis and showing that we can make the findings to issue the coastal development permit. The technical information provided, the scale of the project, all of that would be evaluated, and our decision-making to issue a CDP.
I'm still troubled, I guess, oh, I was, I did, it's, this discretionary, and one discretionary that one wants to develop.
Well, one of the aspects of a discretionary permit is a public process, environmental review, notification to neighbors, that's all part of what a discretionary permit is about. And, and that notification to, to neighbors is part of that process too, different than a ministerial project. You heard from Mr. Armstrong concern that staff is interpreting ministerial actions. Our zoning code is filled with multiple areas that you are familiar with as a commission, tree removal section, parking standards, activity and scenic overlays, all of which contain provisions that if you can meet those separate provisions, will allow for lower-level reviews, ministerial action in many cases. And if you cannot, then there's still a path. And that's how our zoning code is designed, to allow for someone to still move forward, but that discretionary review and analysis is part of the process. And I know that's something that's not sought by the current applicant on this project, but it is part of what our, our code provides for. And some of the examples shown by Mr. Armstrong, although much larger in scale related to the Caltrans and the CRC projects, and all found to be insignificant of environmental impacts and issued, still went through that discretionary CDP process. And that's where staff believes our review and looking at that code section that has multiple provisions within it justify that this needs a coastal development permit. If your commission thinks otherwise, then we should still look at those sections and understand what aspects in which you think that this project should move forward, and staff is here to assist you in making that determination within those sections, if that's where you elect to go.
Commissioner Rodriguez, I see your hand up. You have the floor.
I'm, 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 Commissioner Rodriguez, they can exhaust their, you know, their appeal remedy all the way to the board, and then they go to the coastal commission. I can't speak for the coastal commission. They would, if they take substantial issue with this project, then they take the lead as the permitting agency. Thank you. The only comment I would, if, 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 Okay, thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Mr. Smith, anything? Hearing none, and hearing that no other public comments have been submitted, I'm going to close the public hearing and begin commissioner deliberations. And I guess I'll start with deliberations with my, my take that we do have a coastal zoning ordinance and a coastal plan. And the county planning staff has long ago determined that for this kind of repair, which I think we all agree is important and we don't want to put a stop to, but that this kind of repair requires a coastal plan development permit. I think that today we set the precedent for going forward. If we, if we agree to this appeal and overturn what, what the county planning department has said on this matter, that we set a precedent that is, is backwards compared to what we would like to see for coastal, coastal repairs. And so I, I believe that we should support the county staff's position and deny this appeal. And I will move that we accept and confirm the county staff's recommendation on this Do I hear a second? Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Any, any discussion from Commissioner, Commissioner McPhail?
Just a second. Being the sound monitor here is getting a little complicated. Thank you. I'm gonna have to vote against that motion. And the reason that I will vote against it is the fact that I do find in my mind that there's a definite conflict between those that have been approved with a ministerial permit and this one requiring a coastal permit. Interpretation by staff is interpretation by staff. And for 30 years, I had to deal with so, those sort of things with the state and the feds and the county itself. And a lot of times, the interpretation was just someone's desire to have something done the way they want it done. I'm not saying this with staff, because I know planning staff does a tremendous job and, and such, but in this case, I think there's a definite conflict between the interpretation and what I would like to see is that staff come up with whatever is required for this kind of situation where they want to replace rock that has been washed away, a list of everything that an applicant needs to do to be able to have a discretionary permit. Now, I understand the, the concept of setting a precedent, but if staff would come up with a list of requirements, engineering requirements, whatever they feel is necessary to approve a discretionary permit in these kind of situations, I think will a lot, will go a long way in solving some of the problems that this applicant is having and perhaps applicants down the road. Because as county council said, each project is separate. So we can't say this will really set a precedent. But if we have a set of requirements that everybody has to meet, so it becomes discretionary, then everybody's playing on the same playing field. Right now, I do not feel that the playing field is even. So my request would be that staff come up with whatever an applicant would need to have a discretionary permit, because personally, I don't find any difference between resurfacing stairs and putting in a stainless steel railing that wasn't there originally and call it repairs and maintenance, especially when part of it goes out into the sand, and this project isn't going to be close to the sand as far as that those stairs are. So in my mind, I'm gonna have to vote against this motion and request that staff come up with a set of guidelines or requirements, whatever the right term is, that everybody in this situation along Solomar Beach, Rincon, wherever, has to submit so they can get a discretionary permit. If they don't meet those requirements, then a coastal development permit obviously would automatically come into play. And it'd be, it would be a lot more of a, a job for staff to decide whether to grant or deny that kind of permit. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner McPhail. Any other commissioner comments on the motion? Commissioner King, you have the floor.
I did.
Hold on, Jim, just a second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner King. Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Rodriguez, you have something? Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rodriguez. I, I would, I'm gonna reiterate that this, this is an important decision being made by the planning commission today because, as our county council suggested, that whatever, whatever decision is made today will likely be cited in the future by other applicants as, as a precedent. And I'm hearing from county staff that they expect to see a coastal plan development permit for this kind of repair. I'm in support of that. I don't want to set a, a bad precedent that takes that away and, and makes it too easy for people to do things without a proper review. I agree that maybe there's been some inconsistencies in how, how this has been interpreted in the past, but that doesn't mean we should take a ministerial permit issued for a staircase permit and, and say, oh, that's, sets the precedent that we, the planning commission must now uphold. I, I don't agree with that. I, I don't disagree that maybe staff needs to look closely at how they make these calls, but I, I think it's important that we uphold the, the county's denial of this appeal and, and move forward with consistent guidelines for these kind of repairs. We're gonna see these repairs for hundreds of years into the future, and so what we do today matters. Any other commissioner comments? Seeing no waving hands, let's, let's vote on the motion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Chair White?
Aye.
Commissioner Duquesne?
Aye.
Commissioner Duquesne voted aye. Commissioner McPhail?
No.
Commissioner King?
Aye.
Commissioner King voted aye. Commissioner Rodriguez?
No.
Commissioner Rodriguez voted no. The motion passes three seconds.
Okay, so, so that concludes this item. Let's take a 10-minute break. And then my intent would be to go through the remaining two items on the agenda and the reports from the planning director. So let's come back here in 10 minutes. And so I would intend after we come back that we, we continue with this meeting until we can, we finish it up before lunch. Thank you.
I'll start it right now? Go ahead, you're set.
Okay, we're reconvening. It's about quarter to 12. The next item, number nine, is case number PL-19-0057. Nora, are you able to hear? Excuse me. Commissioner Duquesne, I meant. Okay. And this is another John O'Kendo case, but I would like, because we may want to ask questions during his presentation, I want to read the disclosure statement, and I will ask for each commissioner's disclosure afterwards. At this time, I would like to ask each planning commissioner to state on the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written ex parte communication regarding this agenda item that is not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Please disclose the substance of that information only if that information is not contained in the record before us on this matter. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Chair, Chair White?
I have no disclosures.
Commissioner Duquesne?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. I have a couple of disclosures. One is that I drove by the site, I visited the site and walked, you know, adjacent to it. In order to get directions to the site, I was trying to look at, you know, to get directions and got a hit on a 20-year-old Los Angeles Times article that stated that the cemetery had been abandoned for years. And this was an LA Times article from the year 2000, 20 years ago. So I read an article regarding its abandonment and how some parishioners, you know, started to maintain it and constructed the monument that lists some of the names of people who were buried there years before. And those are my disclosures.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner King? No disclosures from Commissioner King. Commissioner Rodriguez? No disclosures from Commissioner Rodriguez. Commissioner McPhail?
No disclosures.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. John, will you please proceed with your presentation?
So once again, good morning, members of the planning commission. My name is John O'Kendo, and I'm the project planner presenting this next item. The project before you today is conditional use permit case number PL-19- The project before you today is conditional use permit case number PL nineteen dash zero zero five seven. It's a CUP request for the St. Thomas Aquinas Cemetery. Once again, a reminder to members of the public who may wish to comment on the project, not part of the applicant team, that, that we are receiving comments via email. So you will email your comments, two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty words or less, to planning.pccomments@ventura.org. Be sure to indicate in the subject line that it's related to agenda item number nine. So, the applicant, the Archdiocese of Los Angeles County, represented today by dilu, requests approval of conditional, conditional use permit to authorize the continued operation of a legal non-conforming cemetery for a term of forty years. The case number today is case PL one nine zero zero five seven. The St. Thomas Aquinas Cemetery was opened in 1911 and is considered non-conforming as to the Ventura County Non-C coastal Zoning Ordinance, or NCZO's permitting requirements, because the cemetery was established before the, the NCZO was first adopted. So the two-acre project site is eleven hundred feet southwest of the intersection of North Ventura Avenue and East Villanova Road in the community of Ojai, in the unincorporated area of Ventura County. The general planned land use designation for the project site is open space, and the Ojai Valley Area Plan land use designation is also open space. The property, in conformance with that, is zoned, open space with the ten acre minimum, also within the temporary rental unit and dark sky overlay regulation zones. So, the cemetery is in a rural area. There's an arched gated entrance and chain link fence around the perimeter of the property. The last known burial occurred in 1952, and as Commissioner Duquesne mentioned, a plaque mounted on a stone column lists twenty-three individuals that are known to be buried at the cemetery. The proposed improvements include the construction of a forty-eight niche granite columbarium affixed to a concrete pad, the installation of a gravel parking lot, and concrete walk, walkway leading from the parking lot to the columbarium. No native vegetation or specimen trees would be impacted by the proposed project. So in addition to the project description regarding the improvements related to the operation of the facility, funeral services, funeral services would be permitted for no more than forty guests and restricted to the hours between nine-thirty AM and three PM. Visitors would be allowed on the property by appointment only. So in order to keep the rural character of the site, the applicant is also requesting a waiver from NCZO section eighty-one oh eight dash five-ten and eighty-one oh eight dash five-fourteen, section four, related to the requirements for marking parking spaces and providing parking lot landscaping. So, these are photographs of the property condition as of January thirtieth, 2020. To the left, you see the, excuse me, the, the foundation and the low wall that has been installed. So that is the subject of a violation. It was partially constructed, and the applicant, that was performed through that violation process, that a permit was required. So they are in conformance with the requirements of that notice with the filing of this application. The gravel parking lot presently installed on the property, this will be expanded as a part of this permit to accommodate twenty-one parking spaces, and there will also be, as disclosed previously, the installation of a van-accessible parking stall, which will be the lone paved space within the parking area. And then just a general photograph of the condition of the cemetery grounds. So the plans provided by the applicant include a site plan and elevations of the columbarium, again, the structure where the cremated remains will be placed. The CUP will authorize the placement of human remains into the columbarium. The cemetery is not responsible for preparing remains for, for placement, and no new ground barriers will occur as a part of this permit. Access will be provided to the site via an upgraded driveway, which is gonna connect to East Villanova Road, and water service is provided by Ojai Water Conservation District, though no bathrooms are located on the property and no restrooms are proposed, therefore no extensions for wastewater service will be required. So this slide shows the architectural elevation view of the proposed columbarium. The granite columbarium is nine feet, ten inches in height, and about six and a half feet by six feet, ten inches wide. So that's a total square footage of thirty-seven square feet, affixed to a ninety-three square foot concrete pad. So with, with respect to CEQA, staff determined that the proposed project qualifies for an exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act, a section one-five-three-oh-three, related to Class III projects or, or the construction of, of new small structures. So we're applying an exemption in this case. So our recommended actions today are as follows. So we recommend that the Planning Commission certify that it is reviewed and considered the staff report and all exhibits thereto, and all evidence and testimony received during the hearing, and find that the project is categorically exempt pursuant to section one-five-three-oh-three, related to the construction of, or conversion of small structures in the CEQA guidelines, that the Planning Commission make the required findings to grant the conditional use permit, case number PL one nine oh oh five-seven, pursuant to section eighty-one-eleven dash one point one, one point two point one, one A, of the Ventura County Non-C coastal Zoning Ordinance, based on substantial evidence presented in section E of the staff report and the entire record, and that the Planning Commission, excuse me, didn't mean to go past that slide, but the Planning Commission grant conditional use permit, case number PL one nine oh oh five-seven, subject to conditions of approval, and specify that the clerk of the Planning Commission is the custodian and is the location of the documents and materials that constitute the record of proceedings upon which the decision will be based. Just a reminder, once again, to members of the public, as we're concluding the presentation, as we respond to Planning Commission's questions, you do have an opportunity to comment on this project via email. You can send that to planning.pccomments@ventura.org, and in the subject line, you're going to indicate that it's related to item number nine. Again-
Well, we have one Commissioner remotely showing and two missing. Okay, we're gonna reconvene. Okay, great. So we, we were interrupting the, the presentation, the comments by the applicant, so will you please continue with that? Okay, thank you. Do, do any Commissioners have questions of staff or the applicant? Commissioner Duquesne? Any further questions by Commissioners? Okay, do, do we have any public comments received on this matter?
Yes, we received one letter.
Okay, so we're, you're gonna read the letter?
I will read it right now.
Okay, go ahead.
Dear Recording Secretary, I, James Millage, reside at five-seven-five East Villanova Road. This is the second residence west of the cemetery. I have resided at the location since 1992. During this time, the traffic on Villanova Road has increased dramatically. Contributing to this traffic has been added businesses near the intersection of Villanova Road and Highway thirty-three, addition of a controlled intersection at same location, and Villanova Prepatory changing their driveway farther west on Villanova Road. We are highly concerned for the existing and added traffic onto Villanova Road. At the location of the cemetery, there is a turn in the road. There will be cemeteries, excuse me, there will be ceremonies held at cemetery, which will have attendees. Due to the volume, speed, and vehicles entering and exiting the roadway, we are concerned for the dangerous traffic conditions this will create. There have been numerous traffic collisions at and near the location, including a fatality. We have had numerous close calls entering and exiting our driveway. When the cemetery was previously operational, it was a different era with fewer residents and vehicles. Respectfully, James Millage. That's all I've received.
Okay, thank you. Well, then I'd like to close the public hearing and begin deliberations. Any Commissioners wish to make a statement? Commissioner Duquesne, I see your finger.
The, the only question I've heard is, was, um, the, the, in how time that this could go forward, and I was wondering why there wasn't, um, a twenty-year, it, for you that we, the, in place of any director at that time, to determine if there were, you know, conflicts in the future that we haven't thought about now? We just got news with this planning document that, that my twenty years is in the future, and now there's challenges, you know, they're late to eternal, but I still feel like, I, I hear the neighbors worrying that there might be an extractive problem. So I'm wondering, if we did, I think it's twenty years with any director approval and there are no issues with, that, that if you have twenty years, that's bad.
Does that, does that conclude your comment there?
That is my question.
Who, who, you want feedback from staff? Chair White, Commissioner Duquesne, I believe you're asking the value of allowing, within the approval of this CUP, a condition being drafted that would allow for an additional extension of time that the applicant could apply for and basically be a condition compliance, and, and not through the process of a CUP renewal process. Your question is an interesting one, and in fact, we've had some lengthy discussions amongst my staff and the management, oh.
Dave, could I answer that?
Uh, can you repeat that? Commissioner Duquesne, the last comment?
Commissioner Duquesne? This is Jennifer Welch, John's manager. So the reason they're coming before the Planning Commission is because they don't have a CUP. And so the code is real clear that it requires the Planning Commission as the decision-making for the initial CUP. You have the discretion to say, we don't agree with the forty-year term, we'll conditionally approve it for a twenty-year term, and that's inclusive to the project description? At that twenty-year juncture, if you wanna say, they could come in for a minor modification to their CUP, and that would be a Planning Director decision.
And this is Jeff Barnes, County Council. This, this issue's come up before, and I've, I've advised not to try to create a, I'm getting a lot of feedback, is there any way to turn something down? Thank you so much. I've advised not to try to craft a- I've advised not to try to craft a permit review process outside of the zoning ordinance because we've dealt with those where they were inserted in the past, and 20 years from now, then staff has to grapple with what that process looks like. The truth is, a minor modification process is, I would say, not very onerous, and if nothing's changed, it will be, you know, unless a law changes by then with regards to CEQA, there should not be a need to do any CEQA review, and the whole process of a minor mod is, like you said, to put out public notice to see if anyone has any issues with it. And so that's basically the process that you're contemplating. And so I think it'd be hard to come up with anything better that would be easier to understand, you know, on the fly today.
Will you please repeat that?
Yes, good. I, I finally figured out why I keep saying, um, Commissioner, they failed me.
He's saving the day with your audio and the audio of you remote commissioners.
Thank you for your service there. I'm interested in hearing if the rest of the commission has this, uh, my observation of the, uh, all the different, uh, traffic, um, encouraged that the neighbors and looking to you there in the future, uh, I think, I think it would be more inclined to put this, um, approval to 20 years.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Any other comments from commissioners? I will, Commissioner King, you have the floor.
Thank you for this, uh, for this, um, I don't think it's too honorous to make this a CUP for 20 years, but maybe it can, as, uh, as, uh, for our, uh, to, uh, uh, and I think it probably is one where we would just want to make a simple craft motion in the CUP, is that you mean, uh, for your, uh, that, uh, I think.
Commissioner Rodriguez, you have the floor.
I think there, uh, is, uh, also, I would, um, I'm aware of that road, and, uh, because I think a lot of the traffic is, uh, uh, right, uh, even if you have some, like, traffic exit, that's such a traffic, um, that's, uh, that's being, um, under conditions, not sure, uh, we feel that us, you know, uh, kind of, uh, they should, uh, certainly something in, in the, uh, the, uh, traffic, uh, sometimes, uh, be great, and that, that, uh, where, uh, if you, uh, exit, uh, uh, so it won't be, uh, sorry, uh, 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 uh.
Okay, thank you. I would like to comment that I agree with the shorter CUP timeframe. I kind of feel that way in general, that to have very long terms on permits is maybe not a great idea because then we're all locked into, uh, to what's going on there and don't have another chance to review it for 40 years. I certainly won't be here in 40 years. So I would also support the idea of changing the limit to 20 years. It sounds like it's, there's no downside to doing that. Is there a motion out there somewhere?
Would you second the motions with, uh, for your, uh, point, uh, is there a possibility to get that line on in another 20 years?
I will second that motion. Any discussion on the motion? Well, so no further public comments or anything that we need to concern ourselves with? Okay, let's call for the question. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Chair White?
Aye.
Commissioner Adukas?
Aye.
Commissioner McPhail?
Aye.
Commissioner King? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
The motion passes five to zero.
The motion passes five to zero.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Let's proceed to the next item on the agenda, which is one that I guess I get credit for. And the genesis of this item comes from an article published in the Los Angeles Times last February that related to idle and abandoned oil wells in California. As I recall, the number was something like 35,000 either abandoned or idled, uh, oil wells in the state with very much insufficient resources for them to be properly plugged and the sites reclaimed. And when I read that story in the Times, this is last February, I alerted Director Kim Prilhart about this and said, well, what is the county, what's Ventura County doing about this? And to paraphrase her, her response was, I understood she was also alarmed and concerned and wanted to do the right thing about it, and indicated that there was a plan among the planning directors in the state to meet and talk about this issue because it's an issue not just in Ventura County, but everywhere. And then arrived the COVID virus, and everything came to a halt, including any further discussion about this item. I don't know if you've had it, you other commissioners have had a chance to look at the LA Times article, but it is alarming. And so you'll recall that at, I'm gonna say, three planning commission meetings that we had this year, that at the time for commissioner comments, I asked the question, can we get a report on the county's efforts? And at our last meeting, Director Ward did give us a presentation, and I had forwarded the communication with Director Prilhart to staff, and he indicated that, yes, in the future, this would be looked into. I followed up that meeting with a phone call to Director Ward about, you know, how this would be done, and I asked the question, has the Board of Supervisors ever directed county staff to look into this matter? And the answer was no, that this was not a board-directed program to do this. And so I said, well, I think that, you know, I'm alarmed enough about it that I think we should bring it to the board's attention. How do we do that? Do we get the planning commission to adopt a resolution, or how's this done? I had no experience in the procedure. And Director Ward indicated to me that, and he helped me draft this, that the best way to handle this would be adopting by minute order of the planning commission a recommendation. And so I pieced together that recommended action. It's basically saying, recommending that the board consider directing RMA to investigate the status of abandoned and idle oil and gas wells in their regulation in Ventura County, and to report back. I know that the planning commission has no authority over the board. We can recommend things, and they can agree or not agree, it's up to them. But I thought it was important to call it to their attention. I did draft here what I thought the proposed investigation would include, that are stated in the, in the, in the letter there. So I would like to proceed with this. I know since I've been on the planning commission, we've never initiated an action like this, but I guess it's certainly allowed in the regulations, I'm told, and has happened in the past before I was on the planning commission. So that's it. I don't know if you have questions of me, I guess I'm the staff presenter on this. If any commissioners have comments or questions of me, Commissioner Adukas?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner McPhail. I do have questions, not necessarily directed to the chair. We received, uh, a few comments around, uh, the oil industry that talked about our ability to, um, to, to, uh, take these steps in our opinion. So I was wondering if you could get, um, the opinion from, uh, uh, the county's government or not, if it's something that it, it is the planning commission's purview to ask for its access to idle and abandoned oil wells, since that's not a purview of the election.
I would like to address that before Director Ward does. I recognize that the county has limited jurisdiction when it comes to oil wells, and it may be only the reclamation of the site after an oil well is abandoned. But the concern is that no matter who's responsible, whether it's Calgem, uh, the state, the feds, the county, the APCD, if there is an improperly abandoned oil well, the potential for environmental harm is significant. A leaking wellhead can spew out methane and other gases and can leak hydrocarbons. So even though, even though the county has limited jurisdiction, I think the people in Ventura County need to understand who is guarding the chicken coop in this case, who's taking care of that, and the questions that I ask there recognize that there are numbers of agencies involved in this, but that my contention is that the board and the people in the county should understand what's happening. The LA Times article is alarming, but, Director Ward, do you have something to add to that? Okay, will you please repeat that?
Yeah, I have a question, if I can, the council, and I appreciate your happiness, the, uh, Chair White, I really do. I'd still like, like, a question, you know, sort of, like, the person who I addressed it, which is, uh, whether or not it's, uh, the planning commission, uh, you know, if there are powers to be required, given that we don't have, or idle and, uh, there's information that's available, counting, um, that just, uh, you know, this is, this is notable, I'm just very, um, carefully asked for it, uh, and, uh, I'd like to answer from, uh, you know.
The answer is yes. Your commission can ask for it. The board can direct staff to gather the information. The only time, in my legal opinion, that there could be a legal issue is if the county wanted to take regulatory action with regards to an issue, you know, where we were preempted by state law. But at this stage, information gathering presents no legal issue. In fact, it would be kind of scary if there was a legal issue for just asking for information when you think about it in a democratic society.
I think our control and planning, like, you know, it's interesting, it's good information to have, and that's, uh, so, um, that's, uh, those would be comments that, after my intention, that may, uh, I mean, on the first step.
And I guess I'll just, I mean, the fact that there's wells on the ground, that's a land use issue. Land use is within your planning commission and jurisdiction and the county's police power, and so it's not like this is an issue that we have no control, well, maybe we don't have direct control over, but it's within the land use purview. And so, again, you know, I would need to, the county would need to look long and hard before we took any concrete regulatory actions to see if something was preempted, but this general matters is certainly within the county's land use purview, which is, you know, subject to our constitutional police powers.
Okay, I saw Commissioner King's hand come up first, so take it away.
First of all, uh, we, we, I think, uh, I would have to print that kind of article when it came up, uh, in the, uh, uh, the kind of, for us this afternoon, however, writing certain, it was that, yes, in order, seems often be held in, sort of, it's one thing to suggest to the board that it took a look at this, and in fact, because the board's gonna be seen, it's gonna be, uh, uh, processed, or that new board sets priorities and roles. And I think if, 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 while you're doing that, uh, we need to be, I need to take a look at this, but this is, but I think the paragraph that, uh, Chair White, uh, stated, I think we named it three parts, it is kind of simple and plausible development, it's very broad, and then I would support that, just like, you know, detail, uh, probably attention is given, uh, probably, like, to, uh, uh, I would be supportive of something a little more broad and general, and sort of, uh, uh, and, uh, and, uh, A, recognizing that it's the, uh, and have overall responsibility for the whole county, and this job that detailed in this, in order, is, is gonna be very expensive, and, you know, a lot of suggests that, you know, we think it's the fourth job, or I think we're wrong right now, and they got a lot of, a lot of issue there, you know, you know, any pride to say, okay, take a look at this, this is something that might have impact, we can deal with at the county level, give staff some direction, as to how much time and how in detail you want to work out. I'm okay with that, for this level of detail, I couldn't support.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rodriguez, I see your hand.
Chair White, and commissioners, I have to interject, I apologize. We are still having technical difficulties. The public cannot hear through.
The public cannot hear through Granicus. So while we are able amongst ourselves and the Zoom participants to hear the dialogue, the public through Granicus, meaning someone who's not reserved into a Zoom, cannot hear the dialogue and are not being available to participate or hear and send an email into us or otherwise participate. So I know we've had a difficult day, all morning, with these technical difficulties, so I apologize. Uh, our staff has done as best they can, Megan and others, to resolve. But I am going to ask us to conclude this item without any action other than your continuance of it to the November 5th planning commission date, which is our next scheduled hearing. And we will get our technical ducks in a row here to make sure that we can have a, a full discussion at that time.
Okay, that sounds good to me, to continue this item to, till our next meeting, and we can, we can carry on with the discussion and make sure that the public can hear and, and participate. Are we going to continue with the rest of the agenda items? Is that your suggestion?
Uh, I think we only have staff communication, um, that's non-subjective. I think we can do that part, but yes.
Okay, so let's move on to that and, and, uh, the report from the planning director.
Okay. Thank you, Chair White and commissioners. Really was talking about our calendar upcoming. We have, uh, November 5th as your next hearing date. We have the, uh, county ordinance related to cultivation of industrial hemp coming to your planning commission on that date as a zoning ordinance change in both the non-coastal and coastal ordinances. And now, per your direction, we will be adding, the item ten that you were just discussing would be continued to that agenda. And then we do have items scheduled for November 19th. We have the return of one of the items you previously heard. This was the appeal related to a wireless facility in the Muscle Shoals community. And we also have a conditional use permit for the continued operation of retreat of sleeping facilities, the Los Angeles Prayer Mountain. And, uh, oops, I'm, I apologize, that's on December 3rd. So we have items scheduled for you, uh, at this point, through that point of the, end of the calendar year. December 3rd, so November 5th, November 19th, and December 3rd. Thank you.
Okay, are there any items that planning commissioners may wish to raise? Commissioner Rodriguez?
The item, uh, I think it's called, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, item, uh, I think it's called, uh, item B, that deals with hemp cultivation, et cetera. How is what we're going to do on the pick impacted by what happens, though, that there are rights versus?
Commissioner Rodriguez, Jeff Barnes, County Council, that's a good question. Under California law, industrial hemp is, um, regulated differently. It has a different, um, definition than cannabis. So cannabis is what's on the ballot, and so they're completely unrelated.
Are there any other commissioner comments they'd like to bring up? If not, um, I think that concludes our meeting, and without objection, the meeting is adjourned.